Are we ready to get started?
Yes.
We haven't gotten the signal yet that we're on RV TV.
Are we recording?
Are we on RV?
Haven't had the verbal.
Is RV TV?
It's like first day of school, Sabrina. We're excited. So packed house tonight. Was it?
We had a third phase.
Oh, right. Yeah. Interesting. So that's. Is that getting moved to the next? Okay. Okay. Is that the apartment one? Right.
After six.
But we got rid of the parking department, so. I s- right, okay, okay. Are they gonna just scrap the idea of parking altogether? Interesting. Okay, okay. Interesting. We'll see.
That was, it was a good run. They just gave me a chance to get my feet wet in the city without having to do what's the biggest.
Yeah, 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 right, right. Well, now it's just peppering of a lot of different things. Sure, yeah, yeah. It, it, it picks up quick, don't worry. Cause you'll, you'll have an opinion. Yeah, I really need the same. Okay, okay, good. Fair.
There you go.
Absolutely fair.
There's Gina.
Hey Hanson, did you just get my CC for?
Mayor, we're ready to call the meeting to order.
Yes, let's go ahead and get started. I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the January 21st, 2025 Council Business Meeting of your Ash- of your Ashland City Council. Councillor Bloom will offer the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people and whose ancestral homelands we work. The Kukutsum Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shassa, Takelma, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta Village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights, that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you. And Councillor Hanson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Before we move to our first order of business, I wanted to just welcome our new councillor. Doug Nowar has been elected by the people of Ashland and tonight is his first meeting, so welcome Doug. It is great to have you on the council. You will notice that, that I am zooming in. It is because I'm not feeling well this evening and so we're going to do something that is very rare, because typically we would have a council chair in position who would simply take over if the mayor is not there, but that is one of the agenda items for later today. So our charter tells us that in this particular situation, and because it is nearly impossible to facilitate a space like this through Zoom, we are going to elect for this evening only a Chair Pro Tem to facilitate the meeting. The floor is open for a motion to elect one of the councillors who are there in person to the Chair Pro Tem position for this evening.
Mayor, if we could pause and do roll call real quick, please.
Oh, sure. Yes, roll call, please.
Nowar. Bloom.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Duquesne.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Dale.
Here.
Great, thank you. So, back to the electing a Chair Pro Tem for this evening. The floor is open for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to have Bob Kaplan act as Pro Tem Mayor for tonight's City Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hanson.
Yes.
Do I skip off? Kaplan.
Yeah, sure.
Bloom.
Yes.
Nowar.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Great, it's all yours, Councillor Kaplan.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. Hope you feel better soon. So the first item on the agenda is the Mayor's Chair Council Announcement. Today we have the MLK proclamation that I'd like to read. So, a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day 2025. Whereas we honor the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to the values of social justice and opportunity for all, and whereas we remember his legacy as an American hero and tireless social activist who called upon our country to ensure equal justice under the law, and whereas the civil rights movement of the 1960s has profoundly and positively impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. And whereas Dr. King called on us to love, not hate, to seek justice, not revenge, to confront the violence of others with nonviolence resistance, and whereas Dr. King encouraged Americans to come together regardless of age, race, or creed, to strengthen their communities, to alleviate poverty, and to value the dignity and respect inherent in all people. And whereas the Congress and the President of the United States established by law in 1986 a national holiday to commemorate the anniversary of Dr. King's birth. Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Oregon, on behalf of the City Council do hereby acknowledge Martin Luther King Jr. Day and call upon the people of Ashland to reflect upon our individual attitudes, take action to address our unconscious biases, and establish or renew our commitments to equal justice under the law and respect for our fellow human beings. In Ashland, we are better together, dated this 21st day of January 2025. I'd like to take the moment as well to recognize Councillor Gina Duquesne and all of those who put together the wonderful celebration of Martin Luther King Day yesterday, and also to acknowledge many, many years, over two decades, of D.L. Richardson guiding that, that celebration. So thank you, Councillor Duquesne, and thank you, D.L. Richardson.
Thank you, Councillor Kaplan.
Next, the ne- next up is approval of minutes. Are there corrections to be had of the minutes?
Yes, sir. Are you Chair or President?
Pre- President.
Pro Tem Chair.
Pro Tem Chair.
Pro Tem Chair. A minor item, but just a correction on the December 16th study session minutes. As I was going through it on page two. Lisa Werner is the Chair, the Commission Chair, not the Committee Chair.
I have actually already updated that.
Not on the copy I had.
It is updated on the packet. I updated it this afternoon.
Very good.
Sorry, I did not send that out to council.
Okay, and, and I had also submitted a correction. Is that also updated in the packet?
That has been updated and is posted online as well.
Okay, should, do I need to state what it is, or that's fine?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine. Part of the?
Part of the public record?
Okay. Good, okay. Great, then with that, those changes, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
I second that motion.
Okay. Moved in second. Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hanson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Nowar.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes, yes. Okay. So now we have the item number six, number six on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any councillors who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to pull Item B, Resolution Number 2025, clarifying non-debt obligation services agreement with Western Rivers Conservancy.
Any other items to be pulled this evening?
Councillor Kaplan, I was going to pull Item B and so I, Councillor Hanson beat me to it, but I was gonna pull it also. So just putting that out there for discussion.
Great, thank you, Councillor Duquesne. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda? Councillor Bloom?
I move approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Second, Councillor Hanson?
Yep, I'd like to second that.
Okay. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Nowar.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Duquesne.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome four Ashlanders appointed to respective committees and commissions. Catherine Womack to the Public Arts Advisory Committee, David Kahn to the Transportation Advisory Committee, Noah Wertheiser to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee, and John Marr to the Planning Commission. Thank you all, to you, all of you for coming forward and for your future service to, to Ashland. Item B that's been pulled, do we have any? Yes, go ahead, Councillor Hanson. I think actually there's something I needed to do about the, asking people to, if they wanted to speak. Yeah, let me go ahead and do that before we get to this. So, everybody who's here today with us, there's an opportunity to speak at various moments during the agenda. There's, and if you would like to speak tonight, there are pieces of paper over there on the wall where you can indicate your name and the topic that you would like to speak on. It's important that you list what topic you want to speak on so that we'll know where in the agenda to, to place you. If you, those who don't want to speak on anything that's on the actual agenda but want to speak on a completely different topic will speak during public forum, which is coming up very soon. Okay, so. On this consideration, okay. Okay. Now, Councillor Hanson.
Thank you, Chair Kaplan, appreciate it. I've pulled this because we don't have a lot of context in the packet. And for those of you familiar with the project, I apologize for the redundancy, but those of you new to it, I'd like to give you an introduction. So Western Rivers Conservancy has approached the City of Ashland. They are in an agreement with the landowner to purchase thems- themselves through their own work and their, their own procurement of their own funds a 1,900 acre parcel of land on the west side of the Ashland watershed. And they are a conservation group. That motto is sometimes to save a river, you have to buy it. You may ask yourself, what does this piece of property have to do with a river? Well, it's part of a river system. But the Western Rivers Conservation has identified this piece of property as a cornerstone for key habitat, and they've also identified it as a wildfire risk in the urban interface. We all have seen what's happened recently in Los Angeles and the potential threat that a wildfire poses a community when the wildland interface butts up to a community. They also recognize that this piece of property has already a lot of intrinsic outdoor recreational value to it. And they would like to see it preserved for its conservation, its equity, so others can enjoy this piece of property as a, as a piece of public land. And also the economic diversity that outdoor recreation established on this piece of land would increase the Rogue Valley, but specifically Ashland's diverse economic outdoor recreation. And also as a, one of those cornerstone pieces to help mitigate fire risk. So the agreement in here is to help the Western Rivers with the project where they would, they would procure the funds and we would help with the earnest payments over the next couple of years while they are, do their due diligence and raise money to purchase this. This is not the City of Ashland using its, you know, general fund to buy the land. We are, we're entering a partnership. Western Rivers has already put in over $100,000 into work into this piece of property and over 250 staff hours. So I just wanted to pull this to say that, that this is the first step. City of Ashland can back out of this agreement at any time. There will be lots of public engagement with regards to this piece of property. This is not a done deal by any means. This is our, our commitment to three steps to buy in. And as we continue to work with Western Rivers, we will continue to work with partners to develop this piece of property and lots of community engagement. So again, recreational, economic opportunities, livability, equity, habitat preservation, and wildfire mitigation. So with that, they have two, Western Rivers Conservation also has two planning grants in the works too to help us as a community work with them and other partners to develop a plan for this property. And that's all I have on that so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hanson. Councillor Duquesne, did you, you also wanted to pull this. Do you have something to, to raise for the, for the council?
Yes, thank you, Councillor Kaplan, and I do appreciate what Councillor Hanson brought up. And I do appreciate the notion of not creating debt. However, I understand that $25,000, the three different inserts of the $25,000 in partnership with this group. However, we have not had an in-depth, open conversation on how this is going to impact the City of Ashland, looking at the big picture, for maintaining this property in perpetuity. I believe we need to have that open conversation with the citizenry of Ashland before we commit to the first installment of the $25,000. I believe we have to have a conversation that is an open discussion. You mentioned, Councillor Hanson, that there was gonna be a lot of public input. Well, I believe that should happen first before we move forward with looking at something that the City of Ashland will be maintaining in perpetuity. So as it is right now, I, I will not be supporting this.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Duquesne. Councillor Bloom and then Councillor Dale.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, my understanding of this, we're assisting with the earnest money to, to, to get this process started. We'd be looking at probably multi-year process to get to the point where we actually would, the city would take ownership. There's lots of appropriations that need to happen at federal, state levels to get to that point. So I think we definitely have a very, very, very long runway to, to have a lot of engagement. And I think by the time we would be ready to say, you know what, we are willing to take on this property, I think everybody will have their voice heard and will really hammer out all the, all the kinks in it. So I'm happy to support this and move on. I think that this is just a first initial step. And if we don't take this step, then this project is not even gonna be part of a conversation. We need to start this now so that we can then move to that next stage. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councillor Bloom. Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question for Sabrina. So under the fiscal impacts in the packet, it says payments under the service agreement are limited to funds appropriated by the city's annual budget process. When is the, if this is approved or approved tonight, when is that first installment scheduled to be allocated or paid?
February 1st, 2025, from this biennial budget. And then the discussion for the other payments will be during the budget process that's coming up this spring.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Dale. City Attorney?
Yes, I, putting this packet together, the resolution really should have been first and then the, the information like the, the contract that hasn't even been signed and some other kinds of aspects to the contract are still things that need to be negotiated. But the resolution itself is more of a, of a housekeeping and in, in concerns for Ms. Duquesne. I understand where she might be coming from, but what this is doing is, it's basically stick. What it's, what it's doing is it's making sure that whatever agreement or arrangement that we enter into that it's not considered debt under our charter. And our charter does, limits us to the kinds of debt we can do. It's, it's a technical thing. Our finance director could probably explain it better than I. But what I do know is my concern was getting into an obligation in which we, we would have to appropriate money if we, if we did not have this agreement or this resolution. This resolution prevents us from getting ourselves into a debt type situation. So it's really preliminary. It doesn't, it doesn't get us into anything. It's not obligating us. In fact, it's doing just the opposite. It's not obligating us into anything. We still have to get through the agreement and talk with them about the actual language of the agreement.
Thank you. We still have, Councillor Nowar?
Okay, just becoming familiar with this. First time I've actually seen this property being discussed and I guess my question for probably you, Councillor Hanson. Is the $25,000 payment essentially a right of first refusal? That we are the only party with which they're negotiating and, or trying to pull this deal together for, or do they have the ability to take this and shop it elsewhere?
I think this is for the staff.
It's probably more appropriate for staff. So, yes, we are the only party at this point, which is why we're entering into a contract with them. So we will be the only party moving forward with this contract. So the $25,000 is for that purpose, for that agreement, covering some of the cost while they work out the rest of the financing through grants.
Second question on that, then. The, the presumption here is that we are trying to find a way to accept this property. The agreement alludes to, but really doesn't say anything about whether or not there is going to be a cost of that property to us. There is the probability, possibility that there may be grants that can cover the cost, but no guarantee. So the presumption that we're purchasing the property to me is problematic.
So we're not purchasing it. Western Rivers is. We are partnering with them and providing the $25,000 kind of earnest payments moving forward for the next three years. They will work to procure grants, the federal, state, and local level to purchase the property. If they aren't able to do that, then essentially we don't move forward as partners. It's on Western Rivers to find the funding. They are the ones purchasing the property. It would come to us in a conservation easement agreement. And during that five to 10 year period, as we work through this process, there would be a management plan that's developed with Western Rivers regarding how the property will be used, as well as staff working with Western Rivers to understand the cost of that property in terms of wildfire mitigation, as well as the opportunity in terms of recreation and what that would mean for the city.
There are lots of possibilities for this property. I'm not denying that. What I'm trying to figure out is the nature of this agreement that we're getting into. The statement under Exhibit B, funding Western Rivers will work with the city to identify potential public funding sources. Doesn't sound to me like they're working on it. Sounds like me staff time.
So they are the lead. We are not searching for any funding. They are doing all of the searching.
It's not what you're agreeing to here. Well, that's, the, the agreement isn't done. In fact, that's language that, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
That's language that we are already negotiating right now. I mean, I've just, I was working on it today and changing that language around so that it does, so that there is no, you know, question as to who's the lead. They are the lead. So this is not the latest document? It's not the latest. It's, it's a document that's in progress. That's why I said I, I kind of needed to put it at the end of the resolution to kind of show you what, what it is or give you some context as to what, what, why this resolution is, what it is. The important thing is the resolution. The agreement right now is still in a work in progress. Okay. It's pretty close, but. I get it, Councillor, but this was in the consent agenda. If it had sailed right through, we would have been approving a document that was no longer actually the latest document?
So the resolution is correct and the resolution is what you're approving tonight to allow us to negotiate the contract with Western Rivers. So this ensures that under our charter, we're not.
And for us to pay $75,000 over three years.
So that is to be worked out in the contract with Western Rivers after you approve this resolution, which ensures that we will not be incurring debt for this project moving forward.
Okay.
Per the charter requirements.
Step one.
So this is step one for clarification, approving the resolution. The contract is in there as an example of what we'll be negotiating with Western Rivers after the resolution, if the resolution is approved.
Okay. I see we have hands up from the Mayor, Councillor Duquesne again, but we also have somebody from, we have a comment from the public that I want to make sure we have time to fit in. For Mayor, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. One, one thing to just, I think, keep in mind is that this is a business model that Western Rivers has done many, many times over. They don't hold the land that they purchased to protect. And so part of their job is to make sure that they've got a partner early on so that they don't go well down the road and then find out that there isn't an entity that's willing. The part that makes me feel comfortable with staff going forward with this is the fact that at any point, the city can pull out of it. So if we were to start down the public engagement road and we were to have difficulty being able to pull a business model together that would be able to manage the, the property appropriately and all that sort of thing, we can pull out of it. This is a, this is a good faith step towards a partner organization that is putting an enormous amount of time and money into protecting this space that has really important values for our city. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see us moving forward and having this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Duquesne and then Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Councillor Kaplan. I appreciate everyone's input on this. And my concern, my question is, is I understand we, first installment, $25,000 and two other installments with a total of $75,000, while the city still has the ability to pull out if we want to. However, that could be $75,000 down the line. I understand the long runway and all of that. And if this is to move forward, we would have the responsibility of maintaining over 200 acres of land and we would have additional fire mitigation on 200 acres of land. And when I was at the parks meeting, we don't have the $5.3 million to do East Main Park. So I just, I would like for us to do what's in front of us and take care of what we have rather than, even though we have a long runway, I don't know grants are not 100% whether it's federal, state, or how, grants are not money in the bank. So until we have that broader discussion, that open discussion that was mentioned by Councillor Hanson, I do not feel comfortable with this.
Thank you, Councillor Duquesne. Councillor Dale?
Thank you, Councillor. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm hitting the highlights here. So if I understand the recitals correctly, Western Rivers has already entered into the purchase agreement. So this is, this is locked up relative to Western Rivers and the, the current landowners. I'm looking at that and is, let me just pause there and ask Doug, is that, is that a true statement? Okay, okay. So what we're looking at here is for the city to have for the price of up to $75,000 is we are purchasing 30 months of due diligence that comes with a first right of refusal until the end of September 2027. Those are, that's kind of the highlights. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Dale. I'd like to invite the. Okay, thank you, Councilor Dale. I'd like to invite the, we have one public comment. So I'd like to invite Eric Navikis to, I've only got one.
Also Ryan Hawk from.
Did he submit a paper? Did you submit a paper? There are two, two public comments on this topic. I have one in my hand. Eric Navikis, you have two, two minutes?
Two minutes?
Yep.
Okay, this is a little unusual. I guess this is the area of walls, but um, so first of all, this property really doesn't have development pressure on it. It's high elevation, limited access. It's probably uninsurable. It would require septic systems and wells. It would be hard to get approved. So there isn't a lot of development pressure on this property. It basically triples the amount of forest land the city has. So we go from 1,000 acres to 3,000 acres. We just spent $750,000 doing the helicopter logging project on the other 1,000 acres. So you can imagine the scale going from there, tripling those costs. And I think we spent more than that considering the timber crews and other things. We really need to look at the city's economic reality right now. We have a lot of deferred maintenance. And the city continues to have the realities of Measure 5 and 50 over us. So we don't really have any more taxing authorities. So taking on this huge liability of a big chunk of property, 2,000 acres relative to our already 1,000 acres of forest land, results in long-term costs for the city of Ashland. And, you know, I'm all for land conservation, but, you know, the scheme here is to create a mountain biking park. And I understand mountain biking is popular. There's an economic development study that was done by the Chamber of Commerce that says we're seeing an uptick in this type of tourism. So I understand the interest here. Simultaneously, the Forest Service has always stated that recreational use in our municipal water should should be a very low priority because of the fact that bringing people into that dangerous area and human activity always results in increased fire risks. So, you know, you're talking about a recreational development project, parking lots, lots of people, lots of use. It's going to put more pressure on people coming into the watershed, more illegal trails going into the watershed. I think this is a very poor, long-term strategy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Navikis. Mr. Ryan Hawk? Mr. Hawk, I should also just let you know the the system that you, you'll have two minutes and those ringing bells, those chimes that you've heard.
Oh, okay.
You get one chime when you've got, I think, 15 seconds left, and then the two chimes when your, when your time is up.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Mayor Graham, councilors, and members of the community. My name's Ryan Hawk, and I am president of the Rogue Valley Mountain Bike Association here in town. And I'm here to speak on, in support of, of the Madrone Ridge acquisition. And I know we're really early in the process still, so I just wanted to make sure that that there was a a voice in in support of this at this point. This is a super rare opportunity to to get this land from, from an, from an outside organization that has identified it as an important piece of land. The donation and transfer of the property to the city would protect critical wildlife habitat, improve our ability to manage wildfire risk, and create a valuable recreation opportunity for for everyone. I think it's worth taking on as a community, and I can see obvious economic and quality of life benefits for those who live here, and we'd keep it out of the hands of private developers. The Ashland I want to raise my family in is a community surrounded by accessible trails that connect people to nature. I hope you'll support this amazing opportunity to extend Ashland's backyard and to secure a lasting public asset for future generations. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Ready for?
Yeah, happy to make a motion. I move to approve a resolution 2025-01 to clarify non-debt obligation of the services agreement with Western Rivers Conservancy and direct the city manager to execute the agreement and carry out all administrative tasks necessary for its implementation. Substantive decisions, including key determinations on moving forward with specific elements of the agreement, and the final decision to acquire the property shall be returned to the council for review and approval.
Second?
I'd like to second that.
Yes, seconded by Councilor Hanson. Is your discussion, Councilor?
Yeah, just, just briefly, I I look forward to working with this organization and and staff, and most importantly, the community over the next few years, to to see what this would look like, to to do, you know, proper economic study, to get feedback from the community, to to determine what maintenance costs would look like. Working with, of course, Ashland Parks and Recreation, determine their capacity, and even other partner organizations throughout the community, and including the county as well. This is one step, and it's going to be, it's going to be a few years of a lot of work and a lot of engagement. And I hope everybody participates because that's what's going to make this work, is the more voices we have, the better this project can be.
Thank you, Councilor Bloom. Councilor Hanson?
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear all the support, and I understand the question marks and many of the concerns. We do have a long runway here, and there will be a lot of community engagement. This isn't necessarily the city taking on 2,000 acres to maintain with a rake. This is a community partnership that potentially could have a really diverse investment from community groups. And what we saw coming out of COVID was that we had very little eggs in our economic diversity basket. And this helps open up economic diversity and maintains a piece of critical habitat that could go to just one rich entity who would buy this and lock it up for their own personal pleasures. So I think of this as a, as an equity issue. I think of this as water quality, so many other things that I really think that this, this community, seven generations out, is going to thank us for going down this road. So I thank you all for your support, and I look forward to working with Western Rivers and following their lead. They recently just did a project like this in Washington where they procured a piece of private island land that unlocked more public land for their, for their community. They worked in community engagement. It was contentious, but at the end of it, they came out with a product that I believe everybody was happy with. So please look to the example that's there to see what they've done in the past, and and we can, we can do this together. We can make this a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hanson. Councilor Dale?
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I, I'd just like to add that if the decision were being made this evening based on what we know to purchase this property, my vote would be no. But as is the case on large investments, whether at home, be it a business, be it other types of of purchases, you leverage the ability, you buy yourself time to be able to do the, your due diligence and your discovery by just putting forth a fraction of the amount. And to me, the first 25,000, it doesn't even have to be up to 75,000, because we could decide in less than a year that we do not want to spend the additional 50,000 to move forward. And the, so the only risk exposure for the next really 13 months, well, 12 and a half, would be 25,000 for something where the cost is just going to go up. The, you know, the, the state of, of, you know, the country, the state, the world, the city will be changing significantly over time. To me, this, this is a relatively simple vote for me as it, as it relates to the, the, the risk versus the reward. $25,000 here to be able to do some real due diligence and and buy ourselves the first right of refusal seems like a a good investment. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Counselor, Counselor Nowor?
Just a, yeah, just to wrap up on this, probably. I'm in line with with Counselor Dale in that coming into this with what I was presented and looked through, I would have voted no. I don't think that this has been thought through and laid out clearly enough for us to to come to any other kind of a decision on it. However, with the discussion that we've had in the room, I am grudgingly being pulled into the yes column because opportunities rarely come free, and I'm willing to invest some money. Although we, we're throwing around 25,000 up here as if it's nothing, I think there are a lot of people in the room who think that that's a good chunk of money. But to investigate this and to find out that the economic impact could be so positive for us possibly, if we can prove that, then we can continue on with the possible acquisition of this piece of property.
Thank you, Counselor Nowor. I'd like to just say a few words. I appreciate all of the comments that have come from speakers in the, the public and and the councilors. I think a lot of questions about this opportunity have been raised, and I think there's going to be, there needs to be a quite robust process over the next, you know, 30 months to to figure this out. I think there are lots of different opportunities and ways of proceeding, but we won't even have those opportunities unless we take this first step. So I'm going to support this, this, this motion as well to take this first step. Alyssa, roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Nowor?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next is a public forum. Okay, we have, Nowor's a time in our agenda where we hear from the public on topics that are not on the agenda tonight. We have four requests to speak. I'll give each of you two minutes. First is Judy Emmanuel. You'll come, please, to the podium. And after Judy will be Laurel Winter.
First, I want to thank you for your service, which probably doesn't happen too often. It maybe it's kind of a thankless job. But there's been a lot of talk now about what is the purpose of government? And the first purpose of government is to protect the people who live in the community which you are serving. And that would include, as you know, police, fire, our utilities, and so forth and so forth. What I want to talk about is fire evacuation. And not too long ago, I spoke with somebody at one of your park meetings who said that our evac, our evacuation plan is excellent, and there will not be a problem with it. I do not believe that is true. I do not believe that is honest. And the reason that I do not believe that is because we do not have the infrastructure in order to evacuate a large number of people. Now, what are we doing? We're building new apartments. We're allowing a lot of building here and there. So that means that we are bringing in more and more people when what we have for evacuation is 99, which used to be two lanes, is now one lane for bike, so we can have a bike path. And as long as I've lived here, I think I've seen one bike on that road. And we have Siskiyou, Main, and Ashland Boulevard. I, I would like to say that if we had an unexpected fire with high winds, very few people are going to get out of here alive. Okay? I live on Bush Street. My evacuation... Can I continue or no?
Just, you can complete the sentence, please.
Okay. You need, you need more infrastructure. You need overpasses. You'd never get across Laurel from 99. Who's going to stop at a stoplight in a fire? I really encourage you to look at that because, again, your purpose is to protect the citizens in Ashland.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Nowor. Laurel Winter, and then after that will be Rich Rody, Rich Rody and Echo Fields.
Thank you. After I cleaned out some expired or unnecessary products and medications, prescription and over the counter, I had a hard time figuring out where to take them. I got conflicting information, and some things fall between the cracks. One example, Hibba cleanse, which you clean your leg off before you have surgery on it, for example, which would be very harmful. Finally, I talked to the hazardous waste specialist at Recology. They have one day a year for people to take household hazardous waste to a specified location, White City for Jackson County. They spend thousands of dollars to allow Ashland and talent residents to drop things off, and 20 or 30 people do. If every household did, the gas and emissions would be a nightmare. You can't take things for your neighbors because it requires a special permit to handle hazardous waste. What about people without cars or who work that day or just can't do it for whatever reason? Most items will go in the landfill or worse yet, get flushed. That impacts the whole community by affecting groundwater or the municipal water system. Not everyone has time, means, knowledge, and bandwidth to figure this out. It needs to be much easier.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Winter. Rich Rody, and then Echo Fields.
Temporary Mayor Kaplan, Council. I'm Rich Rody, 124 Ohio. I am really trying to suppress a lot of anger about what's happening to the homeless people in this time of emergency weather. So I took heart from Tim Bond's resolution or speech at Martin Luther King Day, and I've written this down to not do that. From Tim Bond's address at MLK Day yesterday, I heard that we should speak with compassion as we advocate forcefully for compassion. And I'm trying to do that and take that to heart. I ask you to have mercy and compassion on all those who are threatened by extreme weather. The people in our community have no warm shelter except for 2200 Ashland Street. Currently, the city is not following our emergency weather resolution and call emergency weather when it's with a 48-hour notice every time the city, the temperature goes below 32 degrees. 2200 is being offered, and it is not adequate. The way 2200 is being managed is not adequate and unacceptable. 14 folks can sleep, and 14 folks must stay awake all night. That is absolutely cruel and tragically inappropriate. Turning people away when they try to survive in these extreme temperatures is cruelty. Last year, Governor's Emergency Order, with that in place, we were able to house nearly 60 people sleeping at night at 2200. Now we have a new, exactly the same Governor's Emergency Order in place, so we should be able to say the same rules. One, please abide by our Ashland Emergency Weather Resolution. Two, allow as in the past for 50 people to sleep. And three, provide additional overflow with a contract for a nonprofit. Thank you and blessings for your continued care for all our people in Ashland.
Thank, thank you, Rich, Mr. Rody. Echo Fields?
Hi. I didn't know about this Great Wall of Ashland until today. I didn't know you were afraid of us, and now I feel afraid of you. So as a, as a token of perhaps trying to mitigate the fear, I brought chocolate. Somebody gave me this really, Ty, you want to check it and make sure it's safe? Okay. I ate some of it already. It's pretty good. They're salted caramel chocolates. I'm going to leave them up here for anybody who's brave enough to come up and talk at this great distance that most of us in this room are not used to having in this space. I think particularly for people who are less privileged than I am, with my degree and with my pre-existing relationships with most of you around the table, this wall. table, this wall, this distance, is going to be intimidating, and will further increase the distance and the toxicity and the relationships that we have throughout this country, including here in our own community. I would like to see this go away. I don't know how much money was spent on it. I don't know whose budget it came out of. I'll leave that for the Budget Committee to maybe try to figure out. But it's objectionable. And I just wanted to say that. And here's the chocolate. For anybody who wants it, if there's some left at the end of the evening, please share it among yourselves up there. I have to leave at 8:00 because I have a dog that needs to go pee.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Fields.
It's just Echo. Don't call me Ms.
I'm trying to keep this formal.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah.
Citizen Fields.
Citizen Fields. There you go. But that's, not everybody's a citizen. Yeah. Next item on the agenda is public hearing.
For the next public hearing.
For the next item. Yeah, for the next public hearing. So, so we're going to have the first reading of the ordinance 3245, an ordinance terminating specified commissions and reestablishing AMC Chapter 2.13 to create advisory committees. Yeah. Tanya, did you, you went to the, say something? Tanya?
I'm just getting in line for after the staff presentation.
Okay, okay, great. I think this one is...
Okay, thank you. I think I'm, should be ready just about now. Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. What's that? No? Yes, please. So, thank you, council. The, this ordinance is terminating the, the commissions that were named in, that was presented to you. And we had a couple changes in the meantime that I wanted to point out. Most of them really were just clerical and some changes, so there's really nothing too substantive. But just so, in case there are any questions. And I'll just go down. It's not too long. There, for instance, in the first whereat, or one of the second or third whereasses, it's, it just shows that I made some mistakes as far as the 2022 dash 32 is the resolution, one of the resolutions that this, this ordinance will be removing or taking its place of. The whole point of this resolution, or this ordinance, is to terminate the commissions, since we have now moved into a committee forum of, of, for, for giving standing committees for your, your assistance in, in operating the city, and to get information from the city and to have your advisory committees. This was, there was a management advisory, there was a word of management in the first section there, 2.13, City Council and Management Advisory. I did not intend to do that. Jeff Dahl, Council, Councilman Dahl pointed that out. So I removed management in those two, in those two sections for your review. The next one is, the next change is, there was a specific advisory committee, but in fact, there's, it's a standing advisory committee. So it's Section 2.13.010, Establishment of Standing Advisory Committees. And just a correction on capitalizing city, and there was one other section here that was in the parks, excuse me, in the public arts. It said, in this particular section, Section D, the bottom, it, it refers to the, the Public Arts and Advisory Committee shall adhere to fulfill the role of the Public Arts Commission, as it may be designated in a management committee or AMC. I think there was just some words there that I did not intend to have in there, so I just removed that whole section there. Again, it wasn't, it, the, the first part of that section describing what the Public Arts Advisory Committee is, is established, it didn't need to have any reference to the, to the, to the commission. And I think, if I'm correct, everything else is done. And there should be no other change. Well, other than, I made it, again, it was pointed out that there was a section, 211.015, when in fact, it was, should be 2, 2, excuse, should be 213.015. So with those corrections, the ordinance is prepared for committees.
Thank you. Mayor Graham?
Yes, thank you, Council Captain. So I have two questions. Doug, thank you for that presentation. If we go back to the Public Arts Advisory Council or Committee, they, I know that they have had that very specific language around serving as a commission. I don't, I can't see your document well enough on my screen. But are we losing something? Is this something that we need to talk with our comm dev folks about? Because they talk about the, filling the role of Public Art Commission, which I understand is a formal structure under state law. Am I misunderstanding that?
I'm not aware of it being a formal structure under state law.
Okay.
You had a Public Arts Commission before, and that's what, and you've changed it to a committee.
Right, but after we...
I'm just looking here. Yeah, Public Arts Commission's point, it was 2.17, a chapter in your ordinance, and now it's, it's now a committee. So calling it a commission, I think, would be confusing, or referring to it as a commission. If you wanted to talk about it as a state, you know, fulfill the role of the state organ, you know, Public Art Commission under such and such a ordinance, I would have to look at that. And I can, and I can do that and come back to you and give you that information.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be helpful.
Yep.
I have a second item, Council Captain, if now is an appropriate time.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Mayor.
So, under the, under the establishment of standing advisory committees, the very first one is the CPAC. And after the, the initial paragraph that describes what it does, there's an A that says ex officio members, the term ex officio members refers only to city staff and council members, including council liaisons to the CPAC. So in this restructuring, we got, we took out all ex officio members for the CPAC. And in the statement above, where it identifies that the city manager will appoint one non-voting ex officio member, and the mayor will appoint up to two non-voting ex officio members, that's the only place in this document, by my understanding, that we talk about those. So is it possible to simply strike that sentence?
You can. The, the, the concern at that point was, was that there are, ex officio members can mean different things, as, as Council Captain has pointed out. And in this case, the, the intent was, was that the city staff and council members would be non-voting members and would be considered ex officio. And the fact that someone from, from a fire department, or someone from a Southern Oregon University, or from the high schools, who are representing the high schools, are technically an ex officio members, but they do get to vote. And so, so if you're going to have ex officio, and, and the CPAP happens to have a lot of ex officio members in that, or has had them in the past. So to avoid that confusion, I figured it would be simpler than to go back and redo the policy section, because we went through that. It took us about, I don't know, three or four times. And since it was, really, the CPAP was the only commission that really was using ex officios, we've, I just put this language in there. I can remove it.
Yeah, they aren't using ex officios anymore. I think that this is where, and they were. You're, you're absolutely right. But we've changed the language to say that the committee is encouraged to includes representative, include representatives from these different community organizations. So they're not required to have anyone represent those groups. And so I think if we need to say it, we should at least pull it up into that list, the A through L list that just applies to all committees.
Yeah. And if you want me to, would you like me to do? I mean, I can remove it altogether, or I could bring it up there. I know that what's going to happen is, if someone along the line, when they forget about this, is going to say, well, yeah, but here's someone from, from the high school, and therefore they're an ex officio member. So they are not allowed to vote. And then there's going to be this ambiguity. And, and I would, I would be happy to pull it up into the, to that purpose section and point out that, you know, as opposed to putting it in, just in the CPAP, the Climate and Environmental Policy Advisory Committee. I'd be happy to do that. It's up to you.
Yeah. It could be the new H, and then bump the other two down.
Okay. So I can just, do you want me to do that? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fine. I think it provides some additional clarity for all of the committees.
Okay.
See, looking, is there any objection from other councilors on?
As, as long as it's not removed entirely, but it makes sense to move it up.
Okay.
My, my understanding is that ex officio has kind of a nebulous definition anyway, as to how it's used in different places. So, keep it in.
Yeah, so we're defining it, so it's not nebulous in our ordinance.
Okay. I, I have just one question. Thanks, Doug, for clarifying that you're taking the management advisory committees. I think they're out of this now entirely. But because they're also not in the policy that we approved in early December, where are management advisory committees established and?
No, I, I did not remove a management advisory committees. The question today came up, and I believe I sent everyone an email on this, was, is a management advisory committee subject to public meetings law? And depending on how it's used, it'll be, it can be subject to public meetings law. If, if it's, if it's just collecting information, collecting data, going out and getting, you know, population numbers and from different sources and those types of things, and bringing it back for, for the management to use and to analyze, then it's not a public meeting. But if it's, if it's discussing policy and making recommendations either to, well, to the city manager or to departments, then, then it becomes, that's when you start getting into whether or not, and most likely would be, a public meeting. And then you have all the...
Yeah. Thanks, Doug. I understand that. I did read your, your email. What I, what I guess I don't know, and I'm asking, is where is, where is it established? How management advisory committees are, are established, are set up, and then how they operate, and this kind of fine point of needing to follow Oregon Public Meeting Law, if in fact, they're issuing recommendations?
Well, it's, it is still established in, in the, in this section. It should be 213. That's, that was one of the problems that I had in here, because it was 211. But it's, it's now in two...
213.015.
213.015. And it's at the very end, says Establishment of Management Advisory Committees.
Right. Let's see. Okay. And you don't think that in there, there needs to be any discussion of clarification about Oregon Public Meeting Law, because that's case specific?
Well, all of these, all of these meetings, or, excuse me, all these committees are subject to public meetings laws. If, if a management committee does not necessarily have to be, it's one in which I would hope that the city manager or, or those who are involved in it would understand when we're getting into public meeting law issues.
Okay.
Whereas I wouldn't necessarily, you know, as for, the fact is, is that almost by definition, the committees are advisory committees. The, the, the management advisory committee is, can be advisory, or it can be...
Thanks, thanks. I, I get it. I don't see any further questions. I, there, we didn't have any requests to speak on this topic. Alan, there was a request to speak, but you weren't, it's not on this topic. It's the next topic? Yeah, okay.
So you still need to open the hearing and close the hearing?
So I need to open the hearing. So I'm going to open the hearing, open the public hearing. There's, nobody has requested to speak on this topic, so therefore, I can close the hearing?
And then looking for a motion.
So then I can close it. Now I officially closed the hearing. Thank you. And I'm looking for a motion on this topic.
Sure, I can make it. I'm Paula.
Your emotion, guy.
Yeah. I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 3245, an ordinance terminating specified commissions, renaming the Municipal Audit Commission to the Municipal Audit Committee, and reestablishing AMC Chapter 2.13 to create city council and management advisory committees. I further move to schedule the second reading and potential adoption of this ordinance at the next regularly scheduled public council business meeting.
Second.
Okay, thanks. Second by Gina. Council Duquesne, would you like to speak to the motion?
So I, I see this as largely a housekeeping item, which, though mundane, it's nice to get everything cleaned up. I think that we still have, we still have some out there that need to be dealt with, but this moves us in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Graham? Council Duquesne, did you want to speak to your second?
No, it was, I think we've had enough, Sid. And once this is cleaned up, I look forward to the second reading also. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Graham?
Thank you, Council Captain. I just have a question about whether the motion includes the edits.
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I withdraw my motion. I'll restate that. I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 3245, an ordinance terminating specified commissions, renaming the Municipal Audit Commission to the Municipal Audit Committee, and reestablishing AMC Chapter 2.13 to create city council and management advisory committees, as discussed, amended, and reviewed tonight. I further move to schedule the second reading and potential adoption of this ordinance at the next regularly scheduled public council business meeting.
Second.
Okay. Second by Council Duquesne. Would you like to speak to your motion, Council?
No.
Okay. Councilor Duquesne, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. Alyssa, a roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Nowra?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance 3254, an ordinance amending AMC Title IX, Health and Sanitation, creating Chapter 9.45 Carbon Pollution Impact Fee, and establishing standards for a carbon pollution impact fee for new residential structures in the city of Ashland.
and Energy Analyst for the city of Ashland. Tonight, I wanted to present just a few slides quickly for you to review an issue that we've looked at in the past. It will be new for Council Nowra, but let's move through this. So as we, as you might recall, May 21, 2024, we talked about how to move forward, and we narrowed the topic to two items to move forward with staff review for a... with staff review for a NOx emissions, like California, air resources board, and a carbon charge. And so today, we're moving forward presenting our findings to you. We have utilized over the last number of months outside council to review these options, and there has been a new, a new event, December 5th of 2024, there was a lawsuit filed against the South Coast Air Quality Management District regarding their zero NOx measures. Oh, California. Thank you, Doug. So one of the questions asked in May of staff was, how is Ashland doing reaching its goals? And so I spent a fair amount of time diving into our existing climate plan to try to understand these better. However, when I looked at it, it didn't, it wasn't the easiest way to, to do an apples to apples comparison of these types of emissions. Previously, they were categorized by residential, commercial energy, so energy types, not energy emission sources. So I sorted through, reworked the information. It'll be coming out in a forthcoming climate report for you all. But the two leading candidates for greenhouse gas reductions, emissions, are natural gas and transportation. Not surprisingly, decarbonization is necessary to meet our goals. This is a more specific look at, at the largest two, and I'll say three, with electricity down there at the bottom, sources for emissions. The two big ones, the greenhouse gases from transportation and natural gas. You can see their trend lines. The green is the transportation. There is some optimism there, as it does start to trend downward and anticipate, with the clean cars too, that Oregon is a part of, that it will continue as electric vehicles adoption accelerates. The blue line is natural gas usage in the city, the other major fossil fuel source. And you see, it does have a slight uptick. And you also see that there are three absent years. We just simply don't have that data for those three years. So we're going to work with the best data that we have, and we see that there's an uptick. That's not exactly what we want to do. That's not what our climate plan intends to do. The other question that was presented in May was, what is the possible impact of an ordinance to help Ashland meet its goals? So with NOx, we were looking at a low NOx, not a zero NOx option. That was what council pushed forth for staff review. And technically speaking, there is no GHD reduction from a low NOx, because it simply is about NOx air quality emissions, not greenhouse gas emissions. In order to actually reduce greenhouse gases, you need to get to that zero NOx territory, which we know is now being legally challenged in California. With climate pollution impact fee, we know that 11.7% of our new construction over the last five years did indeed utilize natural gas furnaces. Obviously, the vast majority chose to install heat pumps in their new residential buildings. So that's what we would be looking at reducing moving forward if an ordinance like the one presented tonight would pass. So again, looking at this, it's not a giant amount of emissions when you compare the number of new homes versus existing homes. I think a better way to think about dealing with new homes is, do we want to try to reduce the emissions moving forward from these new potential sources? And I think the actual largest impact from action by the city of Ashland is likely to be in other communities who may implement something similar to ours, and simply from the, the information that will be out there. I think this is a, not a well-understood topic, that a lot of people have natural gas in their home, and they may choose to switch to a heat pump. So those existing homes, which do make up the large majority of our housing stock in Ashland, may be informed by this information and help to change what they use in their homes. Finally, what is the preferred alternative? And I, we did have three options on the table. It's been alluded to, a zero NOx was not asked to be pursued. The low NOx doesn't really remove greenhouse gases, and that leaves that climate impact fee. This is a tactic that's been used in the city of Burlington to help reduce carbon emissions. It's based on our local energy consumption. It's based on usage percentages from the American Gas Association. We have a scientifically determined social cost of carbon metric, and we've taken industry and government information to determine the service years. And that's the background on how we've come up with a calculation for those particular appliances in a home. If you choose to move forward with this ordinance, there is one revision that I wanted to highlight for you tonight, and that is this 9.45020C. There was lack of clarity on this, so we worked a little bit to present this to you as part of a possible motion, if you choose. And I can read it out loud onto the record
It's on page 116 to 404. It's, or, uh, page two of the ordinance.
And it would replace this particular clause. And I'll, I'll speak about it. Do we need to read it into the record?
Yes, please.
New residential building, new construction of any residential building, including complete demolition and rebuilds in any accessory dwelling units. This definition does not include additions, alterations, renovations, or repairs to existing buildings. And there was a lack of clarity on a couple of incidents, and whether they would be intended to be included in this or not.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Thanks, Doug. Questions from councilors? Could you please put the, zoom on? Okay. Yeah, Councilor Bloom?
Would it be fair to characterize this as essentially a building permit fee?
No, I don't believe it would be fair to characterize it. I think it's entirely different. It comes under the public health-
Chad, could you get closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it as a bubbly, uh, excuse me, a public building fee. It's analogous in timeline, and it is meant to mitigate future climate impacts and carbon emission impacts, to help pay upfront for those costs down the road.
Sure, but I, I think that somebody that would be considering putting natural gas appliances in their home and building a new home, they're going to be looking at it as a building permit fee. They're not interested. It's not, there's not a climate conversation necessarily that's, that's happening there. They're not saying, I hate the climate, that's why I want a natural gas furnace. They're saying, oh, this is the cost to, to, to install this in my home, and it's therefore part of, when I'm doing my permitting and paying fees to develop, that's, that's what this is.
Yeah, I would, I would label it an adjacent construction cost.
I like that. You must have a legal background.
Councilor Dale?
Thank you, Councilor Kaplan.
Thanks, Chad. And just to kind of follow up on what Councilor Bloom was saying, a couple of questions relative to the fee. So the first question, and I'll just give you both of them, is when are these fees charged? Are they at the time when a C of O is issued, or they when permits are filed? And then the second question is, if, if the fee is, is designed, I think as I heard you say, to mitigate the social costs, and I understand that, it says in the packet, as well as, and I think somewhere in the ordinance, it might have been May, but a question was, had come up of, why then do the fees then go to the general fund?
Yeah, good questions. To the first question, the fee would, in that adjacent manner, be paid at the front end, not when the certificate of occupancy is offered up. There'd be a final review adjacent as well to the building permit timeline to verify that it was charged the correct amount. And then-
There would be a refund, I'm sorry. Sorry, can't see, Chad.
Theoretically, yeah, no, theoretically, it could go either way at the tail end. If you didn't install as much, or you installed more, then you would recalculate accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
And then, can you give me the second question again?
The question was, it was, it says that the, the fees go to the general fund.
Yeah.
Was that the intention to do that? The question said, arisen it, that should those, given, given the reason for the fee, go into some sort of specific fund in order to directly affect the, what we're intending to try to mitigate here?
So if you look at the actual calculations over the last five years, the, the fee will not generate a ton of revenue, and it could go down quite quickly. Putting it into the general fund would help to pay for the staffing costs for this position, and it, it may well not pay for the staffing costs after a few years, depending upon how people react to this type of ordinance.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'm not understanding that logic, but I'll, I'll ask a question after the next round.
The idea is to be somewhat self-funding for the staff time that would be required to implement the program?
Okay, thank you. Mayor Graham?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Kaplan. I am wondering, Chad, the, the goal of all of this is to actually encourage people to make a different choice, right? That if they don't make a different choice, then that's when the, the fee comes in. So what, when we think about the, the cost of maintaining the program, are we also including in that cost the, the education around it, so that it isn't just another fee? It's a fee that only comes into play if a, if somebody who's building a new house takes that construction in a, in a particular direction?
Yeah, that's correct. There would be an intent to do outreach, and the date in the ordinance was January 1, 2026, to give ample time for builders and developers to think about this and work around this concept. And I, I think it is probably best characterized as a disincentive, if you will. And it's not necessarily intended to fund climate reduction or greenhouse gas reductions in the future.
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Duquesne?
Thank you, Councilor Kaplan. This, this just sparks interest. If, well, while I support this, I question the money going into the general fund. I thought that this money, or a portion of it, would go to incentivize people who have gas in their homes to transition their homes into electric furnace, or something like that. But then I hear you say that the money is going to go in the general fund and pay for staff to maintain this, this position. Am I hearing that correct?
Yes, I mean, I, I think you're hearing that correct. And I, I do think that people perhaps are conflating two different processes that we've talked about in the past, one which generates a fair amount of revenue, and that would be the franchise fee, and increasing the franchise fee. And this program or ordinance that does not generate much revenue and is maybe not even going to be cost neutral in a few years. So there's not a giant pot of money anticipated from this, and the goal is to, how do you sustain this? And it's, it could be earmarked for the types of things that you've mentioned here, but I don't think it's going to be a substantial amount of money.
May I, too?
Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
So, so if you're, if you're pulling, if, if you're, the program itself is designed as a disincentive for people to have gas. So-
I agree.
Yeah. It, so, so when, if it works, fewer people, fewer and fewer people are going to have gas. And so the program automatic, or will begin to, you know, there'll be attrition. It'll begin to get smaller and smaller. And so you won't have the money to go into the, into the program, much less pay anyone for the incentive.
I think Chad has said that, so let me just cut, because I want to, I want to move on to, Councilor Nowar, you had a question?
Yes. Has there been any consideration in, in looking at this? We're talking about it as if the person who is owning the house, or building the house, is, is a one-to-one with the actual construction taking place. There's a developer in the middle of a lot of this, and if we're talking multifamily housing, there's no way the individual is, is probably associated with this decision point as it comes up. One of the things that I said I was very interested in when I got this seat on this council was the idea of affordable housing. And the more fees we put upon housing being built at the lower end of the, the economic scales, the harder it is to keep it affordable. Was there any thinking in the, in the building of this, this outline that you put together, and I, in general, support what you're talking about here, that housing that is being built, say for example, in a 30-unit development that's taking place, of which a half dozen of them are dedicated for 60% AMI, dedicated as such, that this wouldn't be an additional fee on that one? I know it perverts the, the idea, which is trying to, to put a charge, a negative charge against all use of natural gas, but we have competing objectives here. We want affordable housing. We'd like to get rid of greenhouse gases. You know, there are any number of things that, that are going to bump into each other in this process. Given my druthers, and counsel here, our attorney, who will probably tell me why this can't be done, this fee should be coming on a Vista, not on the property. A Vista is the one that's supplying the, the product that is producing this gas. They should be doing a, a carbon recovery fee that they could put on their bill that they would then send in monthly to the owner of the unit itself, as well as potentially remitting those fees to the city, because we said that's how we want to run it. Perhaps legally, that's completely impossible, but to put it on the development itself-
Councilor Nowar, is there a question here? This, this is a time for questions rather than statements.
Okay. I was making a huge statement to say, in summary, for purposes of low-income housing, have we considered the possibility that this charge might not be applied there in order to help keep the cost of that housing low? Though it's a de minimis charge, it's one of many charges, going back to the original suggestion of, was it a building permit?
Steph?
So when we went through the outreach process in the fall of 2023, and presented our findings in May of 20, May 21st of 2024, we did have testimony from developers in the Jackson County Housing Authority. And what we heard in particular from the housing authority was they are going all electric-